Motion to open case number 4331.
Seconds.
On the table, Emile.
Aye.
Aye. Motion to waive the reading of the abatres and take...
I gotta read it in person.
Oh, sorry.
Public hearing will be held at Town Hall, Conference Room B, Room 301, third floor, 10 Pearl Street on September 4th, 2025, at 8 o'clock. Petition on Peter Stravowski, represented by Rosemont Design LLC, case number 4331, for special permit of the Town Hall zoning bylaw of November 18, 2015, as amended Section 5.5.1, nonconforming single in two-family residential structures in order to construct a 25-by-33 two-story addition with single-car garage located at 153 Station Street. Further identified as a 44 lot 271 in an RC zone in Sevstok. Any person designing here should receive further notice concerning this petition, provided by General Rules of Zoning Board. Petitionee shall file a request containing his or her name and address with the board. Petitioner is representative for any other person designing here. If you hear on this matter, should appear in time and place designated. Chairman of Procheland, it was in the Patriot Ledger, August 20th and August 27th, '25.
Okay, motion to waive the reading of the abatres and take the answers to question number eight as written in the application.
Seconds.
On the table.
Emile. Aye.
Aye. Another motion active? I think good. I'm all set, right?
Yeah.
This, Gilma, want to explain what you want to do?
Sure. David Zilianno of Rosemont Design, as you mentioned, here representing the homeowners of 153 Station. And we are here seeking, building, really, construct a new two-and-a-half-story addition, which will minimally approach the front yard setback. If they may, would you share my screen?
Bill said we should share the screen.
Yeah. So I just... It's small, so hold on.
Here's...
Go ahead.
Okay. Are you able to see my screen, okay? So the present question, as I mentioned, is a new two-and-a-half-story addition on an existing nonconforming lot, which is being added to an existing nonconforming dwelling. The dwelling itself is nonconforming to the rear yard setback, which is 40 feet. And what is being proposed? You know, the modest addition of 25 by 33 approximately feet, which would have one car garage around it, creating a space for playroom up to the existing first-floor level. It's adding the second floor, which leads to three bedrooms. This is, you know, a growing family of young kids and multiple generations living in the property, on the property currently. This does not contemplate, you know, any, you know, new people moving to the property or in the past. This is really just, you know, means to satisfy the day-to-day needs of the residents. And, you know, we believe that the addition itself is sympathetic in keeping with the character of neighborhooded kids. It does not further intensify any existing nonconformities. And the, refer to the, and again, it's made every attempt really to conform. The front yard encroachment that I mentioned here at the front right corner, and you can see it's approaching the front yard setback, which is a climb of 35 feet. Encroaching it by 23 feet. You know, really working up against the minimum dimensions for the garage and the playroom. Really felt that it was appropriate here to, you know, make those adjustments or attachments. You know, for these reasons, with that respect with the board, that our requests were only released and I can answer any questions.
So are we asking for a permit or a variance?
I think it's a Section 6 finding because it's a pre-existing nonconforming dwelling. I believe is one of my questions. I just wanted to check out the...
So is the special permit required? I don't think that...
It would be a variance if it wasn't for the pre-existing nonconforming aspect of the dwelling. So because it's a pre-existing nonconforming dwelling, then they can make a Section 6 finding under the cases that we do with Ransford and Willard. So we have to find how the dwelling, make a finding about how the dwelling is currently nonconforming, in what way it's going to be intensified or creating any new nonconformities and then whether or not those new nonconformities are substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. That's all we have to determine.
I think the nonconformity is inside the lot.
Well, it's actually in the rear setback, I believe. Is that right?
And the size of the lot. The part of the lot, 40,000 per feet.
Yeah.
From the lot size, 11,000 per foot.
So that alone doesn't necessarily implicate this type of process for us. If the structure was conforming, even though the lot size was not conforming, then you wouldn't have this protection available. Why? Because it's a nonconforming dwelling. It's about the structure itself being nonconforming, then you do have this protection available.
What do you mean? Are you saying that you can't do this?
So you can, as long as we go through this finding process. Because it's a single or two-family dwelling, you can alter, extend, or structurally change it because it's a pre-existing nonconforming single or two-family dwelling. So there is a provision in Master and All chapter 48, section 6, that allows those types of structures.
Right, but then you said something about how it has to be a structural...
Right, it can't be just a lot. There has to be a nonconformity when we go to the structure.
Because of the...
And it is, it's nonconforming in the rear.
Right.
I think. The rear setback, it appears to be 31.9 feet instead of the required 40 feet. Is that right?
That's what I read.
Correct.
Okay. So because that exists, then we can move forward under this process.
Do you have questions, Oss?
I do. I'll start.
You have a question, did you? This could be a six-bedroom house.
What is the question?
This might be a six-bedroom house. Do you have three bedrooms?
Yeah. Yeah, currently, currently a three-bedroom and they are, they have, yeah, the parents, the grandmother in the house, they have several kids and they mentioned they're a three-generation. I don't know exactly how, you know, kind of the good things for your veterans are intended for you in the discussion. One point if you didn't want to test office legally.
You know if this house is on town water or in town sewerage?
It is.
It is? Tell us something.
Yep.
Yeah, well, I saw that too. They built the whole...
Yeah, that was one of my questions.
The way you're building the house, you have, I mean, the new house, there's a well in the middle of it. Taking the well out?
Yeah, it has been compensated part of the, part of the state work, you know, part of the renovation.
I didn't hear you. What are they doing with the well?
They're going to, I don't think it's active or in use on the property, but they're trying to remove a part of the property.
So you said they have town water and town sewer?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
What's the total square footage of the proposed addition? And what's the square footage of the existing hall?
Proposed addition is 1,650 per feet. Existing resident, excuse me. Existing resident is 2,300 per feet.
300 per feet?
2,300 and the addition, you said it was 1,000? 1,000 and change?
I heard 1,615.
They're not intending to rent the second half, the new addition or the old addition? The old?
No, they're not.
It's going to be one family living in the house?
It's one family living, the residents that are, you know, that are living there currently. In a submission practice, or even if you look at, you know, look elsewhere for other real estate opportunities, would better solidify the side of their family or look at, you know, a lot addition which is the one being proposed.
So why we need this finding is because it's three or four inches too far?
Three feet. No, inches, .3. Yeah, I guess I'm trying to understand why this couldn't have been adjusted slightly.
Yeah, so as I mentioned, we've been working up against the minimum dimensions for them, particularly, you know, the garage, you know, 25 inches. There is, you know, you can see on the face survey that, you know, the existing pool behind the dwelling, which, you know, the constraints that prevent us from really meaningfully shifting the addition towards the rear view further, disturbing the surround, you know, the patio surround around the pool.
I mean, in the drawing, though, it looks like there's about five inches.
We've made it every, yeah, in every...
I feel like, so you've already got a jock on the garage part. So the garage itself is not, is already further into the front than the, it's not a straight line right there. And that's not the problem. The problem is the playroom area. I don't know why you couldn't shift the playroom back that .3 feet.
Three, four inches.
And just have it offset slightly like that. And then as I look at your second story, your second story doesn't appear to have the same jock, so I believe that's either already overhanging or setback, I'm not positive which it is. If it's overhanging, you know, again, I guess I don't understand why that can't be slightly adjusted so that we don't even, you don't even need to worry about this, really?
Sure. As I, if it flush with the first floor, the jogging on this lower level garage.
So is that actually more than .3 feet there? Is it more than, if it's flush with the garage setback, then I feel like it's probably more than .3 feet closer to the front setback. It's a greater nonconformity than what you're showing.
It flush with the playroom, that would be the addition.
It's flush with the playroom, okay.
20, yeah, 24, but not too...
So is there a reason why you couldn't shift the playroom back slightly and have that overhang? And you just have the garage, which the garage, you actually can fit, the way you've got it structured. You just have that slightly in front.
Under the, yeah, because, you know, the homeowners, really, you know, felt that we're working on some minimum dimensions primarily on the second floor. But, you know, really requesting to, you know, ask for the, you know, seeking the .3 foot encroachment in the front yard.
I mean, it could still be done where you still have the same dimensions, you're just moving it back slightly. Instead of asking for a zoning...
Yeah, and really, it would be, it would be threatening as a, if some of the, you know, the addition of, even the same pool and patios around, and the space that we use to, you know, excavation. It really doesn't need to extend any further back.
So I guess that's what I need to understand because it looks to us on the plan that you showed that you have more than that amount of space. And still not impact the pool and patio surround. So explain to me why that four inches adjustment backwards really doesn't, isn't reasonable.
So, yeah, it's really the, beyond the existing footing, the proposed footing that would need to be patented in order to create the formwork for the, you know, for the, for the thing. Instead, if I think if we were to put it back further, it would just mean that probably the, you know, the edges of patio needs to be reconfigured, which, you know, I don't know, that's off the table, which is something that the homeowners would, looking to be a...
How much space, additional space, do you need to activate?
I mean, we typically, you know, with footing, maybe we expect, depending on the nature of the soil,
Ask my questions.
Emile, you have any questions, Oss? Anybody in the audience have any questions, Oss?
Yeah, I do, actually. With the construction of the foundation, won't the patio in the back be damaged by the excavators?
So I think the approach would be to, you know, to dig the hole, you know, with access from, first from the front of the lot, and then, you know, take the overburden, you know, from the interior and then backfill as they demobilize into the, into the way of. But I think if this did, that the type of location and access would be from the, from the rear of the property.
I have a question. What considerations have been made as to regarding the parking?
Considerations regarding, regarding my parking space? Or cars?
Sorry, that's a great question, but can you please identify yourself for the record?
Yeah, sure. My name is Joseph Tongbo. I'm a resident, I'm a neighbor, actually.
Oh, okay.
I mean, for the record, I think it's great to have developments in the, in the area. But that particular street doesn't have a sidewalk. And there are people that constantly walk in up and down. And, you know, if you're not attentive, you have to be really attentive because there's caves on the street. And the cars tend to travel at speed as well. So I was just wondering what considerations have been made as it comes to parking? Because people will have to go and run the cars maybe wrong way, so take that to park in the street.
Yeah, so that, I appreciate the question. That, you know, the way the property is currently used, there are, you know, two tandem spaces on the, on the northeast side of the lot, past the pull-through driveway. There's certainly, you know, an opportunity to, you know, or for another vehicle in front, you know, that they pull through and insert in the, you know, the garage, providing an additional off-street parking space that doesn't exist today. So, you know, the way they, the way they're sufficient parking for, you know, for their needs, you know, for, you know, personnel would be, the extent of the existing driveway and the addition of the, you know, the single-car parking garage that, you know, that's completely empty. And it increases the demand from, you know, from this property to the parking issue.
But no additional parking spaces will be added?
I mean, it's providing an additional parking, covered parking space.
With the garage.
With the garage.
Between the garage and the driveway? I'm sorry, what was the total number of parking that could be accommodated on this property? As proposed?
I mean, as proposed, I think there are disposition parking for two tandem spaces along the northeast side of the property, two in the, in front of the house, and one within the starting parking garage.
Will you be putting another driveway in front of that garage? So now you'll have... Because I do see the, and I saw it when I went out there. There's the, there's the paved area right along the side yard in the front. But that's not going directly in front of the garage. So are you putting another paved driveway area in front of the garage?
No, so the intent, which is not represented on the survey, the intent is to use the existing curb on the west, is it west side of the property to bring, sort of reroute that driveway into the, into the garage.
So it won't be a circular driveway anymore?
No, there's another, there's a three curb test here.
You'll have that still?
There's one on the far left of the property. There's, you know, two, creating the circular driveway. Um, I think what the homeowners would like to do is just branch off of the, the curb path that's creating the uh, pull-through circular driveway, um, and pull that into the, the proposed garage. Uh, and then abandon the, uh, the additional driveway that is to the west of the addition. Um, and allow that to become just a more.
So that looks like you're reducing the number of parking spaces.
Um, I, I think it's if it's two tandem spaces on the northeast, two in the, you know, in the pull-through and then one in the garage. It, you know, it would probably not connect the, 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 the same.
The way it is now, I think they could get seven guys.
Yeah, there's a good number of parking spaces now, but he's telling us that they're discontinuing this. And then they're rerouting this. And they're rerouting it to the garage, so. Not sure exactly how. It's hard to tell because we don't have a plan that shows that.
We have a problem solving, but I can't see why, can't move that like they're saying, three inches.
Yeah.
And come to us.
Yeah, I'm stuck on there.
Do you have any other questions?
I don't have one, okay.
You want to take a position, support or against this?
Uh, I, uh, I mean, yeah, I mean, support it. I mean, support it. I was just curious because the neighborhoods, you know. There are lots of kids in this.
Yeah, I agree. I guess my thinking is that it's a really lovely plan design. I think it could actually be done without needing any zoning relief. And I think that it should be encouraged that people look to try to avoid zoning relief because they don't need it. And I feel like I'm a little confused about what's happening with the, the plan for parking. Now that I've listened to you, Mr. Giuliano, and I might want to get some more information on that. So I would be in favor of continuing this to another meeting to give them a chance to present that. And/or rethink whether or not this could be done without the need for zoning relief. That's where I'm at. Because it is a, it's a beautiful plan and I do think that you have the space there to do it. And I actually think you can do it, still making it look, because you're already not making this a straight facade. You're using dimensions, you're using offsets. I think that this could be done and still provide everything that the homeowner is looking for. And I frankly think that you're going to be interrupting that, some of that, um, pool, space, patio, um, no matter what, the pool surround. So I don't think you're going to avoid that simply with just this uh, extra point three feet of setback into the front yard. But if it's truly the case that you are and you want to show us an excavation area and you want to show us um, the plan for parking, I'm more than willing to take a look at it one more time. And at least know that you've gone and truly considered whether or not zoning relief is essential. That's my own personal opinion. Sure, go ahead.
Well, I have a few problems with this question. I can go along with that. I, I can't see why you can't go back three inches.
I can't determine if this is the substantial, you know, detrimental or not, if I'm going to be honest. I mean, it's, it's such a huge structure on such a, a small lot in the neighborhood. You can't move it three inches and I, I don't know why I need to get involved in this. How many you're saying?
I have, I have another, it's a question, but more of a request, or like, uh, is it, I'm, I'm hoping they, they're, are they keeping the tree that's in front of the, the current drive or?
I don't know. Are you intending on removing what's in front of the circular driveway?
Yes.
Are you intending on removing the tree that's in front of the circular driveway, you know?
Um, I'm, yeah, we've, we've not had any discussions of, you know, with this tree, no.
Regardless, it's just a request if they can keep it. Would be nice. I'm not saying like.
If they don't, does that change your position?
No, it doesn't. It doesn't. I just, uh.
I just want to make sure that I'm clear.
Emile, what's your thinking? Are you comfortable with the idea of requesting a continuance to get some more information?
Yeah, um, I'm, I'm with that as well. I, I think I love the design. Um, my personal take on it, if it's going to create a really big burden to push it back, then that's something that, you know, makes more sense to come back and have a discussion, but if there's a way to do it and still keep the same design without creating any type of burden on the pool and the patio and all that, then I think that's where we consider to go forward with that.
Yeah, I mean, I think if we have an area of excavation and it turns out that that's going into the pool surround anyways. Then it's hard for us to understand the need for this special permit. Um, because you're already impacting the pool surround. If it turns out your area of excavation does not impact the pool surround and this can be done without that happening. Then, you know, explain that to us and show that to us so that we have a better understanding of it. And in the, in addition, we, we need a little bit of a clearer picture about what's going on with the parking plan, reach, the reconfiguration of the driveways and the parking.
Show what's there, should we report?
I'll make a motion that, well, when would we postpone this to? Start, open the October 4th? October?
The team's
She said there's.
Three places on that, right?
I won't be around on the 4th.
Emile, is Gary? What about October 1st?
I'll be going from the 1st to the 6th. Um, I'll be on the trip.
16.
No, I'm sorry. Yeah, the 16th, October 16th? Okay, I'll make a motion that we continue this to October 16th at 7:31 PM. And that the petitioner returns to show us an area of excavation. Um, and also the proposed driveway and parking plan for the property. And, um, provide us with information as to why it's essential that, uh, that zoning relief is needed.
Second.
All in favor? Josh? Hi.
Hi.
Emile?
Hi.
Hi. Okay. Okay, so do you understand what you need to do?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I appreciate, appreciate your time.
Okay.
And if this can be done without zoning relief, you can just file a withdrawal. And that's
Okay.
We'll just take it up at that time. No one needs to appear.
All right. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I have a question, last one.
Let's check out, uh, next page.
We
Make sure. You have a question?
Sorry, um, I may have missed it. Are the designs available to us to see anyway?
Uh, you can go to town hall and get a copy of them, but you're welcome to take a look at mine. You just have to get the back to me. Certainly take a look at this.
Okay.
Sure. Which one are you on?
4332.
Motion open, case number 4332.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
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 Public hearing will be held in town hall, conference room B, room 301, 34th floor. 10 Furl Street on September 4th, 2025, at 8:30. On a petition of George Smith, case number 4332. For special permit under the town of Stockton zoning by law, November 18th, 2015, as amended. Use Regulation Section 3.0, Table of Use Regulations F. Accessory Uses Item Number 15, the raising and keeping of livestock, horses and poultry. Yes, and accessory use, etc. In order to raise chickens located at 804 Park Street. Further identified in sentence number 76, lot 115, and an R B zone, it's at Stockton. Any person designed to receive further notice during this petition as provided by the general rules, the zoning board of appeals should follow a request containing his or her name and address with the board. Petitioner's representative or any other person designed to be heard in this manner should appear in time, place, date, and time. For chairman, within the Patriot Ledger, August 20th and August 27th, 2025.
Motion to waive the reading of the other's and take the answers to question eight as written.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Uh, the petition of?
Hi.
Want to reply what you want to do?
Well, we didn't realize we needed chickens we've had for two weeks. Now we have two. And my wife's had three. I think the eggs we get probably end up costing us $20 for cousin. She has names for me. A complaint was made. I think a month. And that bonded to someone else, so it's a month there. And, uh, so I filed the paperwork. If we're not going to get any more chickens, this is those two chickens. We're just making officials. I'm going to move the coop. As that shows, firmly needed backyard. It probably is too close to the crossing as it stands. I didn't move it yet because I wanted to make sure it's even. Where was the coop? Ask her. It's between, it's on the side by the house and then the neighbor has the fence there and then the driveway. It's still, I think, far enough away from the house. Life is. But it's not there. So we're going to move it in the back and it'll be like fourteen and a half feet from both neighbors. There's, uh, I knew it was land in the back. And it's a hundred meters from the back.
He realized that, uh, or to help open down and make sure that you have containers that, uh, for food.
Yeah.
It's what our, what I what you do with, with the, uh, waste. Okay.
I mean, I can, we, once I have the new coop set up. Yeah, I didn't see any pictures of the coop in, in the packet. I mean, could you describe the condition of it? It's, it's, there's an area in the, in the top that they sleep in. Yeah. And then, I mean, we got from a friend of ours, uh, rid of their chickens and he was deployed. And then we, my, my son was working on extending the front of it so they didn't want it roaming around. I, I think that might have prompted the complaint because the noise. Is it in good condition?
Yeah, and he's known as an angler.
I mean, it's not a problem. So we kept up with it here.
Yeah.
Great. Yeah, usually we also, um, have conditions around, you know, no roosters, no more than six. This doesn't seem like. No, it's just two and probably two, two years old.
You realize if we give you permission, you can have up to six.
I don't want to six. Tell us when.
Should we go through the conditions just so you know what they are? I pulled up one of the decisions that we have potentially.
Sure.
So. No more than six chickens at any time. No roosters or other poultry are permitted. To the extent feed is stored outdoors, the feed will be stored in watertight containers undercover with tight fitting covers.
We have metal.
Okay. Uh, waste product will be composted and recycled for use in garden areas on the property.
Yeah. In fact, I have a friend who wanted.
The areas where the chicken are kept shall be screened at all times, include a coop and include flooring sufficient to prevent burrowing wildlife from gaining access to the chickens. No sale of eggs or other poultry products to the public will be permitted. You are, you're, this special permit is subject to the inspection and approval of the board of health and/or its agent. Uh, and then the zoning board will determine further requirements of any related to periodic inspections of the coop conditions. Storage of feed, waste disposal, and other concerns relating to raising and keeping of chickens upon renewal of the special permit. Um, and then we typically suggest that there be a renewal time so that we can confirm that there's no complaints. And then usually if we don't receive any, we make it indefinite, but, um.
We also put down this, like, cleaning.
So our renewal dates are always the last zoning meeting in December and we, since that's coming up soon, we'll, we would make this December 31st of 2026. So next year, you will get a, a letter from the zoning board asking if you want to apply to renew this. You don't have to appear at our meetings, but you would need to send in a written request saying you want to renew it. And then we would review if we received any complaints about it. And if we don't, it would be extended indefinitely. And if we do, then we might work with you to come up with some changes that need to be made and then maybe do another period, periodic renewal. But that would be, you'd be able to meet all of those provisions?
No. So I just have one question. Cue a pool. I'm gonna probably have the coop in the next week as I renew.
Well, you won't get. Permission. Until our next meeting because I'll draw up a. A draft decision.
Yeah.
And would vote on it next meeting. But I mean.
You can proceed at your own risk, so.
Okay.
That is allowed, but we have not officially approved it until our decision is signed. And then there's a, there's actually a twenty day appeal period as well. So there's all, until that happens and you get notification that that appeal period is expired, it's not considered officially approved.
I'm just. You have any questions, Emile?
No questions.
No questions. And what's the wish of the board? Anybody in the audience? What's the wish of the board?
I'll make a motion to grant the special permit subject to the customary conditions. Subject to renewal at. On or about December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six.
One second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
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 Yeah, this one you're writing.
Is, is. Bring this somewhat. You'll get the formal. What's that? The old delivery house? Uh, Murphy's? Are you next to, um. The house that's fallen down?
There's one house in Natronis.
Oh.
I'm right, I'm right where Ashby comes in with.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Sorry you got away so. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll take up next case. Forty-three thirty-three.
Motion open case number forty-three thirty-three.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Hi.
Hi.
Hold here, we held in town hall conference room, the room three oh one third floor, ten Pearl Streets, town hall court, two thousand twenty-five at eight fifty-six P M. On petition of Alan and Helen Brain. Case number four three three three. For special permit finding under the town stove zoning by law, November eighteen, two thousand fifteen, as amended section five point five. One. Nonconforming single and two family residential structure. Subsection ten point five point two criteria and mass general laws, chapter forty, section six, in order to construct. A twenty-four by twenty-three point five two. pagar attached for. Existing single family dwelling located at eighty-two Dean's Road, further identified as such as map sixty-two, lot fifty-nine, not see zone, it's at Stoughton. Any person desired to receive further notice concerning this petition. As provided by the general rules, the zoning board of appeals should file a request containing his or her name and address with the board. Petitioner was representative of any other persons desired to be here on this matter should appear at time, place, date. Chairman of chairman was in Patriot Ledger, August twentieth and August twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-five. Okay. Funny is, we'd like to speak, explain what you want to do.
Just motion to waive the reading of the auditors and take the answer to question eight as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
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 Okay.
Well, a couple of years ago, we, we went through this also and my wife is a first responder. She's a nurse in Boston. And I'm broken and in the wintertime, it's very difficult to get out. Having the cars in a garage. Out of the snow, I can just drive her to, get her to where she is. But no. That's basically the biggest reason. Yeah, the Jeep will go through it.
Clearing of the Jeep is virtually.
I can't shovel.
He can't shovel. I've gone many years at work and I do. He's been out in the city for a while.
I have a, my next door neighbor actually had does that for us.
Yep.
But I can't shovel.
The top of the Jeep would still be an extreme difficulty.
Oh, my God, yeah.
To the point of injury. The garage would provide an easy access out. I would be able to get to work. He will be safe. He has fallen in the snow before.
Oh, boy. Yeah.
To the point of having to. Surgery and injuries.
Yeah, tore a cord off my right knee slipping in a parking lot.
How come you didn't build one last time?
Money.
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 It was the pricing.
More money now.
Uh, actually, not really.
Oh.
No, he actually probably a really good contractor and. He's already done work in our house. He did our bothering and the guys are fantastic.
He's.
So it's like.
He was condescending the area and the dog and he welcomed that dog to his attention and anybody who interacts with her well. They were clean. They were very clean. What they did, they were very good. We had them do a couple of things in the house. I will unfortunately had some money coming to him from my mom because she just passed on at ninety-two. And now we can now move those three to our garage.
Okay, I'll let you my first question and then we'll see what everybody else says. That's on town water.
Yes.
Town storage?
Yes.
You have to put it on the left side of the house looking at it.
Yes.
Not gonna. Fill the tide mahogany.
Oh, no, no, this, this one actually is gonna have a four twelve pitch on the roof. That way we don't have to. Rebuild the two windows on the side of the house. The, the, the actual, actual roof line below those windows.
So what was that excess?
And we will not be disturbing any of the ground around the foundation. Which I know is gonna be.
It's gonna be a slab, right?
Yes, it is. Uh, slab front is gonna have the concrete around it.
Yeah, but I, I mean, just the, it's just gonna be a slab. You don't dig it down.
No, no, not gonna put a pumper underneath.
You're gonna have a driveway in front of it naturally.
Yes, we will. We're just gonna, we're not gonna take all of the, all of the area. We're just gonna actually like curve it around. So we have, have the two, the, uh, the width of the two cars tied into our present driveway.
What's the best sound?
Or we can shift the driveway to the side again.
We just got that driveway for him.
I know, but if that's a barrier, that's not a barrier.
No, we just, you just curve it around.
I thought you just put driveway right up into it.
No, because that made, then the driveway is too wide.
Less grass.
Yeah, oh, I, I know, believe me. But I know there are rules and regulations for how wide the driveway can be.
Yeah, positive. You may want to explore it out with the building inspector.
Okay.
It may be easier.
I'll leave him. You have questions?
Yes. So one car or two car or?
Two.
Okay, okay, that's why it's twenty-four feet wide.
Yes.
So you didn't have any, any setbacks that were not conforming before, but now you're creating one.
Oh, no, we had setbacks before because originally the, the original garage was twenty-two, twenty-two by thirty.
Oh, there was a garage there already?
No, the origin, the plans a couple of years ago. I think Kristen Briermark.
Just a decision.
Oh, that was a decision? Yeah, it was, it was twenty-two by thirty. And also we had to tear apart side of the house because of the roof, but.
You have a different architect.
Different, different architect and it's like, oh, thank you.
I was wondering why she brought that up.
I asked her to because I thought it might give me some more information. I wasn't actually on this case, so. Uh, but it doesn't really provide me with the information I was looking for.
What were you looking for?
So I'm interested to know, so I actually think you do have some nonconformities. That was one of my questions. Although your prior decision only talked about the lot being nonconforming, but it looks to me like your front yard, your front setback is not conforming. So you're only twenty-eight point eight feet off the front.
It's going exactly level with the part of the house.
Right, but currently, your current house, that's where we have to start with your current structure.
Okay.
Is not, is within the front setback distance because that requires thirty-five foot setback.
Okay.
And it looks like according to this plan, you're only twenty-eight point eight feet off the front.
Yeah, thirty-five foot right here, twenty-eight point eight.
So that actually allows us to do what you're asking us to do because just, but just because it's a nonconforming lot alone, even though that's how it was framed up the last time. That alone doesn't provide that support, but the fact that your current house is. Is nonconforming in with regard to being its front yard setback allows us to look at this in the way that you want us to.
Okay.
So that was one of my questions. Then I had some questions about these numbers about what your setbacks are going to be because. Your plan shows eight point seven feet off of your side yard, but then later on in number four, it says it wants it to be ten point seven feet. So how far away from your side yard is it?
No, it was eight, eight, it's eight, eight point seven.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure.
The, uh, the. Oh, the guy who drafted up the plans, he took my orig, the original one from two years ago, which was ten seven.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And he just put those numbers and I said, Peter, you gotta change these.
Okay, so ten seven is the original one, okay.
Correct.
And then it also shows that at that point, at this eight point seven spot, the front yard distance is twenty-eight point six, not twenty-eight point eight. Does that seem right to you? Means your lot isn't completely square, which is not unusual, frankly, possibly.
I'm gonna go with that because he, he did, he is going off of the plot plan.
Survey.
The survey.
Okay, so then if you feel this is accurate, then that would be slightly increasing the nonconformity in addition to creating a nonconformity. Those are things that we have to find as part of our process, so I wanted to confirm that. And then my last question really was. How far away, I went out and I took a look at where you are. How far away are you from that addition on your proper, your neighbor's property with this garage? Is there at least a fifteen foot separation between this garage ending and your neighbor's because there.
Here, to that, that side of his house, this is dining room.
Yeah.
And is, I think, I believe, I believe about fifteen feet and they don't care.
I know, I'm more concerned about a fire safety.
Oh, okay.
Concern and which is, if we're making a fine that's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, I don't see that it is, except if there's. A fire safety element here and a fire truck can't get access to that portion of your neighbor's house. Because now there's a garage that's.
Right, no, they, then there, there is access by, by fire, police, ambulance to get back there.
They own the corner road and they said they're no, no forwards to the house.
So they own, I know I went by, they own a corner lot, but it looks like their lot fronts on Dean Street from a visual perspective, right?
Yes.
But it's also a corner lot.
Yeah.
So there's also access from back into that area.
Yeah, they have parking on his side.
It's just typically when we go and look at this for the lots, set side of setback distance, we try to leave at least fifteen feet between structures, not just for fire safety access, but also for, to avoid. If there was a fire there, you don't want your garage to catch on fire. Right? You don't want it to spread to your garage because the, the structures are too close.
Well, I plan on having fire.
I'm sure.
Insulation on, on the outer wall also and on the way on the wall to the house.
I was hoping that the prior decision would have told me how far away that was from here, so.
That wasn't even asked last time.
So it's not, so you're not, so you didn't give my question.
Absolutely.
Those are my questions and I, I feel like I kind of made the answer to that one question so that we know.
Mail.
It's not, it's far enough away.
Nothing right now.
Okay.
I'm, I would vote for this as long as I knew it was fifteen, it was fifteen feet away. I don't mind because I think it would be quick adding this to our meeting and having a fourth matter on for the eighteenth. Because I do think this would be very quick. It's just the answer to a question. But I just feel like for our own benefit and, and yours, that there's a record that says that there is at least fifteen feet. And if you could maybe get your engineer to send it in a letter that says something to that effect.
Well, you won't take my word for it?
I think we need that either the engineer or, or the fire chief could go out and take a look at it and say he has no concerns with the distance based on the plan. You could do it either way. I don't care who you want.
I know my neighbor has no concerns. He's actually, he's Boston Fire, Fire Department.
Well, then he might be able to know. It's not an issue. I just need something that says that. From a fire, for a fire safety perspective, usually all we ask for is a fifteen foot distance. And I honestly would drove by your house expecting to see that visually not even a question. And when I saw how close everything was, I wasn't sure. And I'm not trying to be difficult here. I just honestly, I'm not, I'm not sure. I, I just need to know.
Yeah, no, I can, I can understand that. It's not like I move it three inches.
Wow.
It's, it's close. I'm looking, I'm looking at the picture now. I see what you're saying. It's.
It's, it, yeah, it wouldn't be if he didn't have an addition on his house already. He has that little addition. On the side and it goes into that tree area. Can't actually see it.
Oh.
Because it jutted out a little bit there.
Yeah, it's a porch. It's like an enclosed porch.
Ah.
On that house?
Yeah. They did that to all the houses.
Yeah, so I guess could we continue this to our next meeting just so that we can get that information either through a letter from your engineer or a letter from the. Fire department telling us that they think that there's fifteen feet. If it just says it's fifteen feet, that's fine with me. If it. If they, if it's less than fifteen feet, but they don't, you know, then I think I'd need something that from the fire department saying there's no concern.
So I just call the fire chief up and ask him to come over?
Okay, you can do that.
Good, and he probably will.
Maybe send an inspector or something.
Yeah, just to say, like before the zoning board and they asked you to take a look at this because of the distance between what I'm proposing and what my neighbor has. And they want to make sure there's a fifteen foot distance for and or you're not concerned from a fire safety perspective with what's being proposed.
That's easy.
Other than that, I think you, I think we have the information we need to make the findings that we need to make and add the support of that information.
Alright.
You won't need to worry.
It hurts, let me die.
What's the wish of the board?
I'd make a motion that we continue this to our September eighteenth meeting at seven thirty-four P M. This is the fourth case. Is that right?
Second.
All in favor? Emile?
Hi.
Any others?
Hi.
Hi.
Oh, you figured.
It's okay, it's okay, sir.
You made the motion and you go forward.
Sign of course.
We'll have.
Now, who do I give this information?
Submit it to the zoning board. So, uh, Kristen.
Kristen. Okay.
Yeah.
Easy enough.
Shining out to us, we should have it.
Right. Once we vote, like we said to the other person, you can proceed at your own risk anyways.
Right.
Once we've taken a vote, but it doesn't become official.
Uh, it's, um, this is bad.
What's the question?
Uh, re, uh, reset improvement.
Who?
Reset, is that abrupt?
Oh. Okay.
Yeah, R E, R E S A N T. Nice, reasonable. They did great work. Listens to, uh, if you have, if there's any issues, if you can think of smarter ways of doing things, he actually listens to it. So it's like, it's nice that so many, so many people tell you they don't want to hear. And I want to be back for, I want to see how they, how they're not going to damage the patio at the pool with an excavator.
Um, make a motion to adjourn?
Who will make the decision?
If, if, if you get the letter.
Oh, I won't get the letter. I, I, we live down there. You live, they live over here.
No, no, if you get the letter.
Oh, yeah.
Um, telling us that the chief, you don't have to come to the meeting.
Okay.
But and they'll notify you that, that's when it's ready to be built.
Or you can attend virtually.
I just want to attend. I want to hear how they explain it. Cause I, I understand how, how excavators work. It's not like a little spade shovel. They go in and dig.
Thank you very much. You're welcome.
Have fun. Thank you very much.
Um, then Kristen said the decisions were not able to be done because she didn't.
She just found today. All in favor of adjourn?
Who seconded that?
I'll second it and I'll vote favor.
Emile? You ready to go home?
I'm, I'm getting ready.
Emile, can you write the chicken, that chicken decision? I'll, I'll take on the other two when the, the time comes, but.
Yep.
Thank you.
No problem.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Bye.
Bye.